Am I muted over there? Okay, cool. So I can turn mine on. Do you want me to say something? Oh, okay, great. Wow. Uh, just the grant. And I need to send a newsletter. Do you want to talk briefly? I mean, how much time? Like, let's check in after. I'm so relieved that the chair is here. So I was at RVAC today. I have some questions for Kristen. She around meetings?
You can chew an email instead of the time. Yeah, you could chew an email and schedule a little office.
All the other things.
That was nice. Are we doing this on Thursday? We, I have a sweet beat on my calendar, but I don't know if that.
But you know, that would be. Are you writing this grant too?
I would bore you guys a little bit, but I'll try to write down my questions so I can say without too much.
But there's like non-profit ones too. I don't know. It's my social service. For the same one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, totally.
So it's like census stuff. Anyway.
Okay, perfect. I'm gonna write myself a note here.
Enough to know whether I should care. That's perfect.
And Hector, just so you know, we got lots of hot mics right now.
I think.
Don't touch that.
Hello. Hello. Hello.
Here. Here. It doesn't say that it's muted. Here. Great.
All right. Are you ready, Hector?
But shouldn't we be muted on Zoom? I know.
Boy, me and my stolen computer just, just confused a lot of stuff. I can hear on the speakers. Yeah, it's coming out. Are you ready? Okay, just greater, but yes. We're happy to wait for you, Hector. This is, uh, this is our first Tura meeting, uh, going hybrid and really appreciate all the efforts that you're making to make this happen. Nicole, can you hear Hector?
I could not hear Hector. I could hear you.
You're muted, Nicole.
Okay, uh, my mic was off, so I do apologize about that. I'm ready.
All right, Nicole, just FYI, you're muted, uh, which is fine. I, I just wanted to let you know. Um, all right. You're ready, Hector?
Ready.
All right, let's do it. It's 6:09. We'll call this Talent Urban Renewal Agency Meeting to order of July 11th. Roll call, please.
Board member Pernemroff.
Here.
Board member Greider.
Uh, one day I have to ask her to unmute, I believe.
Number Pestezo is not present. Board member Byers. Board member Parra Miller.
Here.
Board member Clark is not present and Chair Ayersflood.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda items. Hector, do we have any speaker request forums?
Uh, Mayor, as of five o'clock this afternoon, we do not have any requests.
Okay, thank you. Item number three on the agenda is the consent calendar. And there are no items on the consent calendar, so we'll move on to item number four, which is items from the executive director staff.
Great. Just to give you all an update of major accomplishments this past month. Uh, we have submitted reimbursement for our purchase of the travel trailers. Um, so we should be getting about forty thousand back from OHCS for those. Um, with the help of Bonnie Morgan and her team, we have submitted a reimbursement request through the Main Street Revitalization Grant. This is the grant that's helping Malcolm Garage rebuild as a historic site. Um, so we do hope to get a hundred eighty-eight thousand back for that soon to help support the continued rebuilding. It's looking awesome down there. Um, we have officially filed our budget and appropriations resolution with Department of Revenue. Um, and we are finishing up our final documentation for the Tura audit. We expect you guys to see that final draft in either August or September. Right. And then last but not least, um, I got to meet and spend some great time with Marla Cates from her time at Tura, just to better understand past projects and our continued, uh, maintenance of those projects. Um, the big ones that I want to mention so that more than just my brain remembers is we have a time capsule buried, um, next to the Centennial Clock that is missing a plaque. So we're gonna try and get a plaque put out there so that we know when to unvary it, uh, in the future. Same thing for getting a plaque for Town Hall, since we're part of the National Historic Register. Um, while I talked a lot about our planter beds and planting plans, so what was intended for downtown and how we could best maintain it. Um, we talked a bit about the historic district programs that were in place during her time to help support the historic district, maintain that historic character. And then last but not least, the thing I learned about most was that a sommifor, which is the signaling tool on the railroad, was donated to us by the Railroad Corporation, um, as a historic landmark recognizing our depot building. Um, so how cool is that? It is technically installed backwards, so it's not actually signaling any trains. Um, but that was pretty cool fact. So big thanks to Marla for sharing that with me.
And, uh, councillor Byers, our member Byers?
Just a quick question, Jordan. Um, since I, I feel like we kind of touched on this in the council meeting too, can you share a little bit about the planting plans for the bed?
Yeah. So the design of the planting beds and the ones we really spoke about were the ones, uh, downtown and the ones along Front Street for the skate park and the wilderness walking path. The ones here downtown were really designed to try to be easier maintenance. There are very specific type of brasses and roses that are meant to need minimal maintenance, so they do still need maintenance. And I think what's happened over the last few weeks, we just have fallen off the maintenance completely. So if we can get back to our established maintenance, it'll be easier for us to maintain it the way it was meant to. And then a little bit along Front Street and, um, along Front Street all the way across. Um, that was designed really to be wilderness areas and really pollinator friendly eco-plants. An issue that's happening right now is that so many of the trees have reseeded that we have so many seeding coming up that it could be a pretty large issue in the future. So we want to get on top of that now. Um, but I'm going to have, we have public works looking into finding the actual physical planting plans that Tura made, um, back when they were first built. See if we can bring it back to, to its original goal.
Member Penomra?
Yeah, just to follow up on this is we're, we're all excited about plants right now. So, um, so the plants, uh, so I, I followed about the pollinator gardens on the front street and I do remember seeing those. I'm wondering about the, the other ones, the planters that are the roses and things. I'm wondering if that's, if we would make that same, those same decisions now with regard to natives and, and, and that kind of thing. Um, you know, the thoughts that went into it, uh, at this, which was before my time.
Um, I don't know the detail of, you know, what we would say now. I know at the time they did hire a landscape specialist to kind of design them to be low maintenance and no water needs. Um, while still having kind of beautifying flower effect. But I think, you know, what we've experienced is that it's, uh, not being maintained to the level that, uh, was originally intended, because we just fall behind the ball. The other thing talking to Public Works is right now it's all sprinklers in those beds. And so sprinklers is getting everywhere wet, which is helping the weeds regrow every single time we try to remove them. So a thought is that we could convert to a drip system. Which while a drip system needs way more maintenance than a sprinkler system, because it tends to break every year. At the very least, it wouldn't be the weeds coming up. We spend our time on the drip system rather than trying to remove weeds. Thanks. Yeah.
Do you have any updates on, uh, any of the businesses that have applied for the uh, revitalization grant?
Absolutely. So we have only had one business apply that was granted to Grant, and that was Gather Cafe. I have not received yet any other applications, um, though I do know of two people who have recently contacted the community development department, uh, hoping to get one in.
Great.
So, um, for any business on the line, really great program. It's a fifteen thousand dollar grant for property to help improve business frontage landscaping access, et cetera.
Great. Yeah, member Byers?
Um, what, what sort of, how has the board been inspired about this?
Yeah, so we contacted Talent Business Alliance to do kind of the marketing and, uh, technical assistance for businesses on that program.
Great. I can actually, um, add to that. So, um, Business Alliance has done, um, emailers, several, uh, several emailers. Um, we did, uh, we actually walked flyers, um, to the local businesses and, um, and then how many emailers did? Do you, do you remember? I'm trying to think of.
Several, at least two.
At least two.
Yeah, and more to come and social media as well.
Yeah. And so, yeah, we, we have a social media campaign.
This is kind of questions that can ask about all the questions that you may have been given. Um, is there any sort of plans that they do workshop, sort of work people?
Um, yeah, we are offering, um, some technical assistance, um, for application questions, but also the, the city is supporting that process as well.
Sorry, just since it's such a short, um, so you mentioned Malcolm Garage. I know this Bonnie's on the call. I don't know if she wants to add anything.
By the way, just really quickly, uh, on the, on the, um, yeah, on the email campaign too, we have a list of two hundred and fifty, uh, registered businesses that we've been sending that to, just in, in case anybody's interested. Go ahead, uh, member Penomra?
Yeah, I was just gonna, um, say great news about Malcolm Garage. I didn't respond to that one. And since this is just short, I mean, I was just gonna invite her to, um, fill us in. Should I?
Bonnie, I'm gonna give you the option to unmute if you'd like to say anything, but no pressure if you don't.
Sure, I'm, I'm glad to answer any questions anyone has. Um, uh, it took me a couple, it, well, we worked hard on the progress report that, um, Jordan submitted and, um, I think we're waiting to see what kind of more questions we get back from, from the, the, um, Parks, Parks Department is to, is to how, how we follow up on it. But, um, any questions anyone has, I'm glad to answer.
Bonnie, I have one I'll throw out there just for folks to know that I've been shit. My recollection from our progress report is that you're about twenty percent completed.
Uh, no, uh, forty-five percent is, yeah. Um, so yeah, they should be starting roofing next week or maybe towards the end of this week. Uh, windows will probably go in in another week. Most of the interior framing is done. Um, electricians were there and the, um, junkie was there for the, um, HVAC. So it's progressing, but there's a lot, still a lot ahead, ahead of us to do.
If I may, I just want to say that's really exciting. I'm looking forward to the, when you're giving tours.
Absolutely. I, and in our first, I don't know, the ribbon cutting or the open house or, or, uh, yeah, it, it, it'll be fun to really have the building finished. And then to have Talent, Talent Maker City, um, you know, they're hoping to break ground in the fall, so that's pretty exciting too.
It's gonna be party streets.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any questions?
Question.
Member Byers?
Bonnie, um, and maybe it's not totally settled. I, I don't need the detailed answer, but, um, what's the vision for the use of the building?
Oh, so this is gonna be a multi-use building. Um, so there are two apartments in the back. And, um, we did get some big signage or a big banner up on the fence of, oh, a couple of weeks ago that kind of shows the floor plan and how it's gonna be divided. But the front part is commercial, so, um, one, one business could rent it all, or we designed it so that front space could be divided into bit, two business spots. So, um, I've had a few nibbles on the commercial. We'll see, we'll see what, you know, what kind of interest there is. Um, you know, I keep asking myself, what, what does downtown talent need? What, what do all these apartment dwellers need in the, the kind of the core of, of talent?
Can I ask another question? Um, is there an update on the work that Tom is doing? Tom Humphrey?
Yeah, I will say Tom has re talked to him multiple times. I have not been able to get back to him yet with my capacity stuff. Um, I know he had set up a meeting with the housing authority to talk. Um, so I have not gone over how that went or how their redraft is going.
I'm wondering if we can request moving forward a staff report from him for each, um, just a brief update of some kind of written update to the board?
Yeah, I can make that request with him. Absolutely.
Great.
Um, I will say, uh, his progress is probably is really limited by my, uh, ability to continually check in with him. So we're working on that one.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All right. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is items from Chair or Board Members. Any items from the board? Um, I, I guess I'll just ask another question. Are it is, are we fully occupied at the gateway?
Um, so last I checked in, which is about four weeks ago, fifty of the fifty-three trailers were occupied. And there was a waitlist of thirty families looking for transitional housing in the valley.
Great. And these are thirty fire impacted families?
Correct.
And these are fifty occupied by fire impacted families?
Right.
And Access, how are they doing?
They're doing good. They had some stock turnover on their end, um, but Access and Partnership with the residents have created a really beautiful community garden. Um, down at the site that is looking incredible, uh, way better than mine. I'll be honest, but tomatoes are not my thing. I learned this year. And besides that, I have, uh, no big updates or communication from them, so I hope it's going well.
Great. It's, I'm so glad to hear that. There's so much misinformation about who's occupying the, um, who's occupying the gateway site.
And, and I will share, Mayor, it's just a reminder, or sorry, Chair. Um, per our agreement with Access as well as Access's agreement with the state, they are only allowed to house Alita fire impacted families.
Yeah.
Um, who lost housing in the fire.
Would you please send on our, our gratitude to Access or maybe provide me with a, an email to email somebody with her gratitude to Access for the added value of creating a community garden? I mean, that's going above and beyond, and that's the sweet touch that really makes a difference for the people, for those folks, I'm sure, that are living there. Yeah, that's it. Uh, member Penomra?
First, I don't know if you can see Nicole has her hand up.
Does she? Oh, I, I apologize. I can't, I actually can't see it. I can't, I actually can't see it.
Because, yeah, you have to, um, there's a way, if you click the gallery, um.
The gallery view?
You can see the gallery view and the, it's, it's tricky.
I thank you. So I'll go ahead and recognize, uh, member Greider, and please unmute.
Thank you. Oh, okay, thanks. Um, quick question. And Jordan, I don't know, um, if you have the answer to this, but I've been curious. Um, with the, um, trailers and the possibility of them going to the families, um, with the ownership, I, I was wondering how that works, um, with like, some of the turnover, is it how they're selecting those families? Like, if you just happen to be in one now, you might have that option, or like, how, how does that work? How are they choosing those, those families that could, could keep them? So Access, um, Access and I are still figuring out the actual process of potentially providing those trailers to the families. That has not yet been clarified how that works, or even how it would work for the families receiving it. You know, is that considered ten ninety-nine? Um, et cetera, so there are a lot of logistic details that we'll need to work through.
Member Prenamorov?
Yeah, this is, um, just more of a comment and question, if you've heard anything more recently, but it was, um, several weeks ago, I don't know if it was weeks or months, that we found out about Royal Oaks. Um, and there were a lot of, I think, uh, the same kind of folks that are coming to the Gateway folks that, uh, fire survivors, um, the, the people of Royal Oaks were gonna be, uh, you know, first in line, but then after that, other, uh, uh, fire survivor families, and, um, the fact that that didn't, uh, come about as, as quickly as had people had hoped probably impacts our waiting list as well, I'm guessing.
Yes, I think, I believe ten to fifteen families that are at the gateway site were, are slotted for Royal Oaks. Um, so Royal Oaks is still moving forward. The Housing Authority has made very clear that they're moving forward procuring, uh, new housing to put on that site. But it is gonna cause a pushback delay as they work to acquire that.
Pretty significant, significant delay.
They're unsure yet. The hope is less significant than people fear.
Oh.
Um, but we'll see what the outcome is. Um, so that project is still moving forward and still online. It's just less of a quick timeline than expected.
And if I could just make sure I heard okay. So you said about fifteen families or so?
I would say that the guestimates I were given were about ten to fifteen, but I do not have exact numbers.
And, and the scenario would be if, let's say, tomorrow magically houses were available in Royal Oaks, those folks would then transition out of uh, gateway transitional housing, and some of the folks on our waiting list could move up.
Correct. The purpose of the housing program is all transitional, to try to move folks to their permanent housing.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Oh, member Prenamorov?
Sorry, so, again, it's just because it's such a short agenda, I'm being indulgent. Um, so the other, uh, uh, housing that we have coming online in talent, um, do we, uh, expect to see any movement for our gateway folks, um, to their permanent forever homes, uh, in the next, what's the window looking like?
Yeah, so I don't have any numbers for the other housings, just for folks to know. I did put in a TNNR for this, uh, latest addition. So Veronese Flats is seventy-two units coming onboard this fall, and they have an agreement with Access where they're prioritizing fire impacted families. Um, so that includes gateway site as well as folks not on the gateway site, but still looking for permanent housing. Housing Authority, they are rebuilding, uh, thirty-six units of farmworker housing at the Anderson Vista site. And that's expected to be completed around springtime, is the hope. They're moving incredibly quickly. Talent Mobile Estates, um, they have placed their first two modular units that they will be housing folks in soon, and then they'll hopefully start placing the other manufactured homes over the course of this coming year. So there's eighty-nine units, seventy-seven units right there, because it's already, I think, eleven or twelve units on the site. And then age plus affordable housing is a twenty-two unit, uh, specific to folks over the age of fifty-five. They're over on Suncrest, you can see their modular homes are staged on the field next door. Um, so they hope to have that ready early spring for folks to move into, and they also have an agreeable with Access to prioritize fire impacted families.
That's, if I can, that's, that's really great to hear, and thanks. You, you have all that memorized, that's brilliant. Um, and I heard you say modular homes, I'm, I'm thinking that those are not the same modular homes from Idaho that had the problems or that they just didn't suffer the same fate as, uh, the problematic ones from Royal Oaks.
The one place that Talent Mobile Estates were, and I'm quoting this off of a memory from their newsletter, so if I misquote, I do want to point you guys to their website. That's hosted through Coalition Fortaleza, but they are modular homes that have been produced by Hacienda CDC, so they've been produced here in Oregon.
Okay.
Uh, as kind of a prototype, and so Talent Mobile Estates is testing out that prototype on the site. And those are, when you drive by, those are those really fun, they're white with really colorful sills and some awnings on it, those are those modular homes. And we can get tours, that I believe they will hope to do tours on, uh, at some point.
I think that, uh, they're visiting, um, there's a visit upcoming, actually, I think. Um, and, um, this, so the Hacienda is the project that, um, Pam Marsh was involved in, right, where they converted a manufactured home.
Yes.
Plant to build these. Yeah, she's done remarkable work. Um, thank you, Oregon State Representative Pam Marsh. Any other questions? Well, boy. Um, Jordan, do you need any kind of like board direction to get the update from Tom? Or, we're good there? Okay. Um, are there any written communications for today's agenda? None? We have seen none? All right, item number seven then is adjournment at, so six thirty-one.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, community members.